... Commissioner Lockhart is going to offer an indication, followed by the ...
Dear Lord, thank you for having us all here today in good health and good spirits. Help us to continue to go forth in togetherness and for the good of the community. Amen.
Amen.
................................................................................................
Mr. Chairman, I'm with the acceptance of minutes of the October 10th meeting and dispense for the formal reading.
Second.
And a motion, second discussion. No objection, the motion is approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Return to proclamation that Commissioner Lloyd is going to offer.
Thank you. I just want to start by thanking all of our Sandusky businesses for choosing to do business in Sandusky. This proclamation is for Business Appreciation Week, and we understand that you have a choice as to where you're going to open your business. And from my own experience, I feel that Sandusky and Erie County is a very supportive community to be able to do those things with fellow business owners, always offering words of encouragement and advice and just a wealth of community support. So, thanks to all of those that do. So, without further ado, whereas Sandusky businesses employ a diverse workforce helping to preserve the economic well-being of all our citizens, and whereas Sandusky wishes to recognize accomplishments of our existing businesses, entrepreneurs, small and minority-owned businesses, and the major employers which contribute greatly to the economy, and whereas the city of Sandusky and Erie County wish to recognize and show appreciation to our local business community for the essential role they play in driving the economy, and whereas ambassadors from the city of Sandusky and Erie County will be making personal visits to businesses during the week of October 23rd through 27th, 2017, to learn firsthand how to continue to make the entire region a great place for business, and whereas we encourage representatives of our local businesses community to use this as an opportunity to talk about challenges they may face and develop strategies for how they can be overcome, and whereas the city of Sandusky and Erie County celebrates local businesses and hopes these exchanges will help us recognize our local successes and reinforce the value of a strong business community while listening and identifying what government resources may collectively be utilized to help them thrive, and whereas we thank business owners for their contributions to our communities, our economy, and our nation. Now, therefore, the Sandusky City Commission hereby declares the week of October 23rd, 2017, as Business Appreciation Week in the city of Sandusky and urge residents to patronize local businesses as they celebrate their achievements and look toward growth in the year ahead, dated this 23rd day of October, 2017.
Thanks, Commissioner Lloyd. I just want to offer my own thanks for the businesses that are here. You know, the funny thing is, I've, of course, been a Democrat my whole life. When you are young as a Democrat, you sometimes look askance at business. It's sort of a natural tendency. And as you get older and see your friends employed, you see them start a family, you see some of them start their own businesses, you begin to understand just how critical businesses are to the very lifeblood of our community. We can't support our families, we can't support our schools, we can't support our churches, we can't do any of the things that we want to do as a community without businesses. And even though there are still people like Mr. Brady who are in business in Sandusky, by and large, I do appreciate the businesses that provide jobs and life with us here. Do you have a rejoinder, Mr. Brady?
I have no rejoinder.
With all seriousness, thank you. And to the staff, kudos to staff, because, you know, it was not so long ago, Ms. Lloyd, you may have overlapped a part of this period, it was not so long ago that our, once a business came into our community, we said, then they said, "We want to do this," we said, "No, you can't do that." And then the business owner would wait for advice about, you know, how they could change it, "Well, no, you can't do that." And today, it's so different, the attitude today is, "Let's figure out a way to do that." And I appreciate that, and that is prevalent throughout this community. I get that feedback from people all the time. You know, you wouldn't hear this, they tell me, "You wouldn't know this," but I want to tell you this story, and it's a great story. So, there are so many people who are responsible for that. Thank you.
Compared to audience participation, anyone wishing to address the commission on any of your agenda items, please step to the microphone, give us your name, and share with us your thoughts or questions. Seeing no one move toward the microphone, we will, I guess we need a motion to accept the communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation.
So, move.
Second.
And a motion, second discussion. No objection, the motion is approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. And let's see, on the consent agenda, I've said before, this is, I shouldn't get two weeks off in between, but Mrs. Cresser has now written it down, so that I get it straight. So, is there anyone who wishes to have any of the items removed from the consent agenda for discussion purposes? If not, then, Mrs. Cresser, would you read the consent agenda items into the record?
Yes, sir. Item A is Amendment Number Six to the General Appropriations Ordinance passed earlier this year, and Item B is payment for the annual 9-1-1, equipment replacement and maintenance.
Is there a motion to accept, or I'm sorry, to adopt these items?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Brady.
I should like to make that motion to accept the consent agenda and declaring that both ordinances, as drafted and presented to the city commission, under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with sections reflected in their ordinance, whether it be in accordance 13 or 14.
Second. And a motion, second discussion. Commissioner, would you pull the commissioners first on the motion?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Those ordinances passed. Thank you, Mrs. Cresser. Mrs. Cresser, would you present item number one, please?
Yes, item one is a resolution accepting Resolution 17-001 of the Sandusky Building Code Board of Appeals and authorizing the building official of the city of Sandusky, Ohio, to take the necessary action to abate the nuisance by demolition located at 1719 West Madison Street and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of this resolution on the suspension of rules in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion, second discussion. Harris, I understand that you will be presenting some of the background and information regarding this particular piece of resolution to the commission.
Yep. To you, Commission President, to the commission, to the people here in the audience. Item number one is a resolution presented to this commission to accept the resolution of the Building Code Board of Appeals following a September 21st, 2017, appeal to the notice and order of demolition regarding property located at 1719 West Madison Street. At the time, it's also known, for ease of reference, as Pool Boys. The property was inspected by our chief building official, our current one, Scott Thomas, as well as George Polis. It had been inspected numerous times, dating back to 2014. The appeal was heard by the board on September 21st, 2017, and a motion was passed instructing the city to proceed with the abatement of the nuisance. By way of background for the commission's purposes today, it's not a hearing. The resolution is presented in a manner that it's to be accepted unless rejected by two-thirds vote of commission. So, procedurally, you have with you the findings of fact of the chairperson of the Building Code Board of Appeals and their conclusions reached by that board, and the commission here today either accepts those or rejects them by a majority of two-thirds vote of the city commission.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Commissioners, discussion.
I was just saying, Mr. Chairman, having heard no evidence to the contrary, I accept what's been presented.
Mr. Poole.
Mr. Chairman.
Brady.
I sat through the, I believe it was the final hearing regarding this matter. I think I've, I want, I know that I want to say publicly that we do not, as a city, take these matters lightly. This is a dramatic thing, this is a drastic measure that we are taking, and we take it seriously, and I think that we have provided serious discussion. I know staff has provided serious discussion and tried to find remedies to avoid taking property down to the ground. That should always be our, our model is to not do that. I'm convinced, after sitting through that hearing and reading this information, that this is the right course of action, and I applaud the staff for working through this issue. It's an unfortunate result, but it is the best thing for our city.
Mr. Brady, further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
And now on the resolution?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted. I understand that Item Two has been pulled from the agenda. There was confusion by the otherwise would-be winning bidder, and I'll let us go back to staff for the reevaluation. Is that correct, Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mrs. Cresser, would you present Item, I don't know whether to call it Item Two or Item Three, but would you present the next item?
Yes. The next item is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an exclusive right to sell agreement with Hanna Commercial Real Estate of Cleveland, Ohio, for the marketing and sale of the former GNC property located at 2806 West Monroe Street and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Fine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
And a motion, second discussion. Ms. Lasco, could you outline for the commission and the public the nature of the agreement and how you see this unfolding?
Yes, Mr. President, members of commission, people here in the audience, what's in front of commission is what's called an exclusive right to sell agreement, or more generically, a listing agreement with Hanna Commercial Real Estate. As everyone knows, this property has been in ISO for many, many years. The city acquired it in 2016. We immediately followed with the demolition of the property and came to conclusion on demolition in summer on that site, so sort of the next logical step is to bring that site back to market. Very rare that a city so built out as Sandusky has the ability to bring six to seven acres to market from a commercial and industrial standpoint, attract someone either locally or regionally to build and construct on that site. What we did is we went through a statement of qualifications process with commercial brokerage firms. Staff received four proposals from interested firms, and based on the marketing strategy and the track record of those firms that submitted to the city, a recommendation was to go with Hanna Commercial Real Estate. The agreement is for 12 months with an 8% commission and a list price of $220,000, which is right around $32,000 per acre. And Hanna Commercial Real Estate would also be able to get commission on that site if they do find a buyer that ultimately doesn't close until three months after the listing expires. One of the things that I do want to give assurances to the city for is, even if someone proposes to buy the site at list price or more than list price, the city and the commission have sole authority whether to accept or reject all proposals, although the economics of the site do matter and money does matter, I think we ultimately want to be sure that we get the right user and the right developer of that site. So, even again, if someone offers us $220,000, we do have the ability to deny or accept that proposal. So, this is sort of just that next logical step before hopefully soon we're bringing a purchase and sale agreement to this commission for consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Lasco. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Ms. Lasco, I just want to commend the work that you and your team have done in making these commercial properties available again. At this point, we have almost 20 acres that have been, that were brownfields, and they weren't going to be used because they were in bad shape, and we've either demolished what's there, or we've cleaned them up. It's a combination of both in some instances, and you have, I understand, about another 28 acres in the pipeline of additional commercial development. You know, we're all excited to see America's crown finally coming down, but that's another example of what's coming, and it is so unusual in a community like ours to be able to make commercial property available again when we were once completely built out. So, it's great work, thank you.
Questions or comments, commissioners? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted, and we move to Mr. Wupser for his report. Mr. Wupser.
Good evening, commissioners, audience and staff. I'll start with the donations. First, numerous bags of candy have been donated to the Sandusky Police Department for distribution at various Halloween events. I ask for a motion to accept that donation of candy.
And a motion, second discussion. No objection, the motion is approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved, with our thanks.
Great. Moving on to new and old business for the police department. The police department will be participating in at least six Halloween events to pass out that candy and other trinkets. This is possible because of the generosity of citizens who have donated candy to the department. Thanks, Chief, and your team for organizing those efforts. Also, Crystal Bunce, outreach coordinator for the Alliance Abroad Group, has requested that Sergeant Rod Snyder participate as a presenter at their national conference in the Wisconsin Dells on November 8th and 9th. Funding is available in the travel budget for him to attend. In addition, Crystal is working on funding sources, which she'll be instructed to compensate funding to the city should she find a funding source, but we just wanted to let the city know that Rod's been, Sergeant Snyder, I should say, has been actively involved in working with the folks at the Alliance Abroad Group in Kalahari and others for years, and it's a nice opportunity to show the leadership that our department's developed in managing that situation. Moving on to the fire department. The fire department will be at the Sandusky Farmers Market on Saturday, October 28th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon for Fire Prevention Month. They will also be participating in the Community Harvest Festival on the same day, from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. Also, the Sandusky Fire Department will be participating in trick-or-treat at Cedar Point on Wednesday, October 25th, so it's great to see the safety forces getting involved in the local Halloween holiday. Also, Finance Director Hank Salloway attended cybersecurity training on October 3rd, 2017. Moving on to Public Works, the Streets and Traffic Division will begin citywide leaf collection on October 31st. We ask that residents pay close attention to the dates and times to ensure they receive the best service possible. One addition to the program this year is if residents cannot meet the schedule, we're adding a drop-off area for bagged leaves near the Marquette Drive entrance to the city service center, seven days a week from October 31st through December 31st. For any questions about the city's leaf collection program, please contact the Department of Public Works at 419-627-5829. I'd like to thank Aaron and Scott Cromer, the superintendent over there, for coming up with the drop-off center. We think that'll be a nice amenity for residents who are tardy and getting their leaves to the curb, or just to have more than the late fall. Moving on to community development, the regular planning commission meeting will be held on October 25th at 4:30 p.m. in the commission chambers. Again, October 25th at 4:30 p.m. in the commission chambers. Also, the regular Board of Zoning Appeals meeting will be held Thursday, November 16th at 4:30 p.m., also in the commission chambers. So, that's Board of Zoning Appeals on Thursday, November 16th at 4:30 p.m. in the commission chambers. Also, we wanted to recognize that during the week, this week, city staff and ECDAC will be visiting local businesses in recognition of Business Appreciation Week to thank them for their presence in the city, as well as to identify any needs or ability for us to help them with those issues. The Recreation Department, the city's Recreation and Planning Departments have applied for Coastal Management Assistance Grant through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, Offices of Coastal Management. The Paddle Sandusky Project would plan, design, and implement public access for canoeing, kayaking, adaptive sailing, and stand-up paddle boarding at several locations along Sandusky's Bayfront. The pre-proposal application was due Friday, October 20th, and the city proposed a $125,000 project with half coming from city funds, as well as public-private partnership funds with local businesses and clubs. Applicants will be notified of their pre-proposal status by November 27th with the full application, if encouraged, due January 5th of 2018. Awarded grants will be announced in late May of next year, and projects begin in July 2018 and completed 12 to 18 months later. So, that concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wupser. Questions or comments for Mr. Wupser? If there are no questions or comments for Mr. Wupser, we return to old business. Anyone having any items of old business? Any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I attended the NAACP banquet on Saturday night with several of the commissioners, we're also there, and I know Mayor Darden, or former Mayor Darden, I'm on the cemetery board with him, and he's been after this Martin Luther King bust for several years. And the point that really bothered me originally, the price tag was $400 bucks, 40 years ago. Now it's $10,000, and I believe they've, it's $10,000, I think they're right around $3,000. I'd like to make a motion that the city commission donate $1,500. I'm going to also give a check, and I think some other commissioners I've talked to are too, and let's get this done. We got the site in Washington Park now, and I think it's time to move forward and get this finished. If anybody else would like to comment on it, be happy to hear it. But I just think it's time, let's get this wrapped up, you know, hopefully get it done.
I'll second that motion.
There's been a motion, and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lockhart.
Certainly worthy of anything else that we're doing. I think we've created a fund for artwork and that alike around the city, so it would be very appropriate to make some type of donation toward this, whatever the amount may be, if it's $1,500 or more.
Mr. Chairman.
Brady.
Perfect location. I believe the location has already been determined to be in the east side of Washington Park, where there is a present memorial, and I think that, hopefully that is the location that they've chosen. Does anybody have information on that? Or have they not chosen a location?
Mrs. Cresser? I'm sure. Mrs. Cresser?
Mr. President, I had asked Reverend Darden, and I cannot remember the other lady's name who was involved with this, Jennifer Ashburn. We needed written documentation about the size of the memorial, the weight, and all of the information pertinent to it, so that we could design around that, and I have not received that yet, so technically, I would say there's not a formal authorization, although I'm sure it did come, but...
Yeah, I think that my comment on that would be that we would encourage city staff to work very closely with them on pulling those specifications together. Make sure that it is size-wise and a perfect fit. I think it's been a long time coming, and let's, I will also be a contributor to that. I think it's certainly worthwhile endeavor on their part and on our community's part.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
The site dedication was held last year on April 4th in Washington Park, so we already have the site there, and I understand what the clerk's saying here, but we've got to get beyond that. Like you said earlier today at the high school, let's work together and get this thing done. It's been 40 years, really. Can we get past this? I've talked to some of the commissioners. I just left there Saturday night thinking, wow, do I want to hear this next year or two years from now when I go to NAACP, but let's get this done. And a lot of good people over the years have been involved. You can see their board members, you know, several prominent board members, and I just want to get it done, whatever we can do to push it forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
Yeah, truly appreciate the commission's, Commissioner Waddington, and the commission's support for this program, for this, to get this done. It's early since, early in the process in terms of, I think, in terms of identifying a definitive spot, until we get it drawn, as clerk, as Ms. Cresser indicated, until we get the drawing, and where we put it doesn't matter as long as it is a good, it turns out to be a good project. So, I'd like to not get locked into like we're going to put it right in that little spot that they identified, because it may, anything could come up between now and the time they get this done. We may find something better. Appreciate the commission's support for this.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Poole.
Excuse me?
I mean, I'm sorry. I still live in Westmore.
I want to hear you say my name.
She wants you to say her name.
Commissioner, all exalted. I apologize.
Oh, hell, oh, hell.
I made some mistakes going on again.
Some mistakes, some mistakes are better than others, though.
Yeah. You went out on that.
It's not the worst thing that could happen to you.
I fully support this, of the Martin Luther King bust. Sandusky has played a significant role, I believe, over the years in African-American history, from the Underground Railroad to Martin Luther King to others, so I think this is a great idea, and yes, the specifications of the bust size and all that can be worked out later, but yes, I fully support this.
Well, it's a great idea.
Are there further questions or comments? Mrs. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That motion passes. Additional items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Sorry. Go ahead. Mr. Lockhart.
So, I was going to say something about the NAACP, but they have said it, so that's good. A lot of people showed up this year more than last year, and of course, all the commissioners were there in support of that, so that was excellent. I do want to make a motion on behalf of the ADA Commission. Today, we decided that a great place for Dr. Lenz's dedication, who created the ADA Board back a long time ago, would be at Lyons Park along the walkway. That walkway was made, or a great expenditure went to making that ADA accessible, and so I thought that would be a great location, as they did. So, I'd like to make a motion that we dedicate that walkway along Lyons Park to Dr. Lenz's memory.
And a motion. Second?
Second.
And a motion, and second.
And I'm sorry, I should point to Brad Link, so maybe he has a, can fill that idea out a little bit.
Mr. Link, anything to add at this point in time?
I think that Commissioner Lockhart and I spoke earlier today, and it would be the area from where the new turnaround is going to be, heading west along the waterfront. We haven't specifically said how long, what the length would be, but we could work that out at a later time.
So, Mr. Lockhart, I just didn't have a chance to ask any questions about this before tonight, because it just didn't come up.
We haven't specifically said how long, what the length would be, but we could work that out at a later time.
So, Mr. Lockhart, I just didn't have a chance to ask any questions about this before tonight because it just didn't come up. So, this is, I think this is something that the ADA Board and Mrs. Lenz all find to be appropriate.
Yes.
Okay. Just didn't have any background on it, that's all.
Right.
Okay, that sounds good to me. Questions or comments on the motion? Mr. Cresser, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Ms. Lloyd?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
That motion passes. Additional items of new business?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington, this time.
I should have brought it up with the city manager report, but tomorrow's Lyons Park dedication.
We just talked about it, yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay. So anyway, I had too much coffee in my drink, too. But it's been 10 years for me, and Mr. Murray was on the commission with myself back then, in '07. And we had a lot of roadblocks in the beginning, and I talked to Mayor Murray, I think, what, twice, maybe three times now. And I think what was neat about it was, you can't do, you can't do, you can't do it, and that just turned me on at the time. So, we're gonna do it, we're gonna move a little mountain or a little hill every day and every year, but we're gonna get it done. And I went out there last night by myself, and I'm just thrilled with it. The same thing when someone mentioned George Myland earlier today, might have been at the high school, called me on a Sunday night when we were gonna close the greenhouses, you recall, 10 years ago. That was gonna get closed down, well, by the plants at Walmart or Myers. Well, he called me up, why don't we go green? And thanks to Mr. Murray, we got solar panels, we went through, got the grant stuff, and we changed that and saved that. So you can change things, and sometimes that process was a lot faster. So that told me, going forward, if I'm not, or was ever here 10 years or 15 years from now, you can make a difference or you can make a change. But you just gotta keep pushing the big rock down the road. And sometime, a lot of times, I wanted to give up, forget it, you know, we don't have the money, it's never gonna happen. And then I, like I said, I went out there last night, and guess what? It happened. So, and I want to thank all the past commissioners and anybody that worked out, Clerk Kelly, you've been around the whole time, or a lot of the staff that's been around. It's neat to see, to go out there, to me, it's almost unbelievable that it actually happens, so. I think it's neat.
It is a crown jewel in the city of Sandusky, it really is. It's just a gorgeous facility. And you got me thinking about a couple of things, so we went back, took a look at it. And, you know, the, we have spent over the last, in nine years, we've spent about 2.2, a little over 2.2 million dollars. And that was all guided, you know, we get criticized for the studies that was, that we do, but that was all guided by a study that we did at the time. It was a time where we didn't have a lot of money.
Right, right.
But we did the study, and you know what they say about how you eat an elephant?
Right.
One bite at a time, and we've eaten that elephant one bite at a time. All these projects over all these years, there have been 13 commissioners, other than those sitting here at this table, who have voted on it, five city managers who have worked to implement it. Hope you're here for a while to figure it out. And there have been, this commission, I mean, this is, when we do these big things, it takes time. It takes lots of votes. We have had at least, Mr. Cresser and I counted these up today, we've had at least 25 votes to get piece by piece by piece by piece by piece. And we need the plan to direct us over the course of different commissions, and we all need to stick to it, with a stick-tootiveness that actually made this happen. So, Mr. Waddington, you were a great example and leader back in 2008 when we commissioned the study, and it's really great to see it come to fruition.
Can I pass this on to Mr. Brady? I had a conversation with him today about how that green initiative out there, what we're doing with the waters and stuff, it's not going back in the base, so this is even, has a bigger impact. And Mr. Brady knows far more about that than I do, so I'll leave it to you.
Chair. I think that sometimes it gets lost in the shuffle, the small things that make a difference.
But I am convinced, and even more importantly than my being convinced, we have a city engineer in Mr. Klein, who is not only convinced, but is leading the way, not just in this city, but I think is ultimately leading the way throughout Ohio, those people that are now paying attention to the things that we're doing in green infrastructure. This is, this is going to be, or is a shining example now. Just imagine, we now will shed 280, almost 285,000 gallons less water into our treatment plant to be treated because now we're treating it to the bioswales and to the rain gardens. And that, that might seem, I mean, in the scheme of things, that might seem insignificant. But again, that's how you eat an elephant. You make a change in the footprint that we leave behind one step at a time. And we couldn't do that without the kind of staff that we have. Old engineers don't take on projects like this. Young engineers who have put us now on the cutting edge of this kind of technology are going to lead the charge in that. And I'm proud of our staff. As I, as I look at them and I see the youth in this, in this room, we have that in our city manager, we have it in our law director, we have it in our treasurer. You know, we have it across the board. We're really benefiting. I'm not leaving out the. But we're so blessed to have, to have a combination of youth and experience. And this is a case, I think, where you folks are going to lead the way, and we're going to become the model of this type of, this type of green infrastructure. I know that, I know that this is just the beginning of that.
Mr. Chairman. I don't want to leave off Mr. Link, as far as the picnic shelters. Give us like maybe a 30-second snippet, as far as what we did, they're really in good shape. I mean, sure, and inside internally, and had the work that we had done out there.
Sure, through you, Commissioner President, to Commissioner. So, over the past two years with the shelters, specifically, we've put new roofs on, painted them, we fixed picnic tables, fixed concrete, pressure washed, all that stuff. Plus, on the underside, we've put all metal flashing under there to prevent the birds from getting up there, put vents in there to make sure that we don't create any rot and things like that. So, we've done, we've taken a lot of measures to make sure that those shelters will last as long as they possibly can.
Well, they look great. A lot of us were out there on Saturday, and they just, it's really great. Other items of new business, or anybody want to touch on the Lyons Park still? Mr. Lockhart.
Mr. Chairman, so I want to announce the trunk and treat Saturday, this Saturday, October 28th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Trinity United Methodist Church parking lot, which is at East Jefferson and Hancock Street. They're gonna have hot dogs, cider, and donuts, and me, apparently, because they called and invited me out. So, everybody should come out this Saturday for that, that nice trick-or-treat, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Trinity Methodist Church there on Hancock and Jefferson. Also, I have one other thing. We as a city, and I'm sure who just said it, but we, I've noticed by going to some of the conferences around the state, we are, in fact, farther ahead than most cities our size in Ohio in economic development and in the systems and operations that we do, and I want to make sure that we stay that way. And so one of the things is, I was contacted several times by the National League of Cities, and they wondered why we're not in there, and I realized that it got lost in the shuffle perhaps, maybe a couple of years ago, that we fell out of that. And in such, they've explained to me that they offer a, quite a few benefits, some of those being conferences for our elected officials and for our staff. They offer a prescription discount to all of our residents. They offer a number of other programs that our residents should take advantage of, and the membership fee is a small fee in comparison to other things. And so I would, I'd like us to rejoin the National League of Cities so that we can stay ahead of the curve and stay moving forward. And so I would, I would ask the manager to give a little bit of depth on that because he's had experience with National League of Cities, and National League of Cities president is currently Matt Zone, who's a councilman in Cleveland, so he's a close neighbor of ours.
Well, Mr. Lockhart, I'm certainly interested in taking a look at that. I had a lot of experience with the Ohio Municipal League, and I found it to be really an ineffective organization. And so, but I, but I'm, I mean, I realize that National League of Cities is a entirely different organization. And I don't, I'd like to know why we dropped out if we once belonged, and the costs and all that stuff. And I appreciate Mr. Whoopsir's recommendation, so I appreciate you raising it that way.
And just through the Commissioner President, Commissioner Lockhart, this has come up on the staff level. Commissioner Lockhart mentioned it a few weeks ago, but I know Director Lascoe was at an event and ran into Councilman Zone, who's a former colleague of both of ours, and he mentioned, you know, why, you know, we need to get Sandusky as a member. And I have had some good experiences with National League of Cities and the national level in previous positions. And so we are very open and did some research, I believe, through mine and Kelly's office. And I think it's, what, $1,800 annually for a membership for a city of our size. We can come back with more details if any other commissioners have questions, but we're certainly supportive of the efforts, and it does provide participation both at the national and the state level, so.
Okay, thank you. Other items of new business? And we turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission on any city-related items? Please step to the microphone, give us your name, address, and share with us your thoughts.
Sharon Johnson, 1139 Fifth Street. Just for a clarification on the GNC property, it's going up for sale. Did you mention it's going up for sale for $220,000, did I hear, or?
The initial list price through the commission, to Ms. Johnson, the initial list price will be for $220,000.
I'm sorry?
Yes, $220,000 is the listing price.
Okay. We're not gonna take anything below that? Is that a set, or what?
Well, it's, it's not unlike when you list a home, you know, there may be some bargaining back and forth. That's where the, that's where we set the mark.
Oh, I hope that's not gonna be a free giveaway. Okay, leaf connection, collection. I would like to see more leaf collection, more times that the truck comes around. In my area, I'm thinking about once it comes around. And we have leaves sitting in the gutter all, you know, all winter until springtime, and they're still sitting there. I'd like to know if this has been corrected for this coming year?
I think the, I think the staff got the message loud and clear last year that we, both as a commission, as a community, were disappointed in how that turned out. There were a couple of strange things that occurred weather-wise that exacerbated the matter, but I believe that we've put more overtime hours into the budget in order to be able to make sure that we keep up. That is what we ended up doing last year, in order to be able to catch up at the end. And Mr. Whoopsir, Mr. Link, can you comment on that? I, it's been, Mr. Klein, I always forget who's in charge of what, sorry. If you could comment on that a little bit, I know you took the heart and you had developed a plan at the end of the last leaf season, but I didn't anticipate the question tonight, and I forgot to look up to see what it was we did.
I can't speak to last year, but what I can say is that, you know, the, the leaf collection last year, I do recall, one of the big issues that we have, and one of the things we're trying to look into this year, is switching the trucks over from leaf collection to plowing and then back over to leaf collection. And that takes quite a bit of time. So last year, when we got that early snow, and I would defer to Mr. Link on that one, but I think that was one of the issues that we had last year, was converting the trucks back and forth. Obviously, we strongly urge residents, and we're putting the tags out again, to get your leaves out by the date listed. Put them out after that date, then yes, they will be sitting there for quite some time. We have a date that's listed in there, exactly what the date is. If you, if they're out there, we'll get them, even if it's in the afternoon that day, we'll come back and get them. But, you know, this is something that our crews, the longer they're out there doing the leaf collection, you know, that's pulling them off of other projects, other things that they're doing, like crack sealing and things like that. So, you know, that's, I can't urge it enough, get your leaves out that day. Make sure the vehicles aren't parked in front of them. That's a big problem as well because we can't get all the equipment back in there. We are looking at other options for next year as well, additional equipment we could purchase. But one of the big things that we are doing, if you do have trouble with your schedule, any resident has trouble with their schedule this year. As mentioned in the manager's report, we are opening up an area out at the service center that residents can bag their leaves. If they, if they do miss that date, they can bag their leaves, take them to the service center, and, you know, we'll pick them up from there. But that would be in brown paper bags. You can get those at, at most hardware stores or things like that, that just haul them out there, we'll take them, we'll take care of them from that point. That's something new this year so that they're not sitting in the, in the tree lawn areas and in our, you know, streets and gutters.
Great, additional service. Thank you, Mr. Klein.
I know sometimes the leaves, you know, are still on the, on the trees late. They just don't fall off the trees. And so you really need to do more than one time, two or three times, to get all of those picked up. I'm hoping we don't have a problem like that again. The third thing is the City Hall project. How's that going along? I don't see any movement down there, and they broke ground. I don't see any dumpsters, or?
I have not spoken with the contractor to know just exactly where we are. Does anybody have an update on that, Mr. Whoopsir?
Director Lascoe.
Mr. Lascoe? No. Okay.
Through the commission.
Financing is locked in, and it's up to them. They've got a completion date, and it's up to them to figure out how this, how it is they're gonna get there.
Financing is done, financing is closed, building permits are issued. They have a delivery date to the city of no later than December of 2018. The groundbreaking, although a groundbreaking, merely ceremonial, but they're finishing up their bids on their asbestos, which is the first step. So, for what it's worth, it's gonna be, it'll take a while for the project to ramp up to the point where you see scaffolding and dumpsters because they have to get in and do interior demolition and asbestos abatement first. So, there'll be work going on that may not be as visible as a traditional construction project, given that it's rehabilitation, not new construction. So, we're very confident with the delivery date of that project to the city by December of 2018.
And if he doesn't complete it on that date, does he get fined? I'm hoping he does.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Other comments, anyone wishing to address the commission? If not, then there's our motion to adjourn.
So who?
Second.